Meeting called to order. Councilmember Baz Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton is absent. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the Volta Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to special events applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are two applications before you this evening. First one is for fireworks related to a wedding happening on May 23, and the second one is for the Memorial Day carnival.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esha.
Okay, we were going to have a presentation on a special improvement district, but we have a technical screw up, so you're going to come back in two weeks to make it?
Yes.
And that's your decision?
Well, unless somebody, unless I can go out to Staples and buy the connector and come right back.
No.
The only thing I'll say is can we keep it tentative because we may or may not have another presentation on the 12th?
Correct.
Yeah, so we might have to bump you to the end of June. We're working on potentially another presentation.
Is this something you need, the slide deck four, Stuart?
Well, I think you need to see it.
Okay, all right.
So put you on June or July, no problem.
Yes, well, unless I said I can go, somebody's just trying to check their computers, see if they have it.
But we got to move on with the meeting.
Yeah, move on to the meeting, and then if I have to do it at the end, I'll do it at the end, if that works.
That doesn't work.
No, we'll do it at the June or July meeting. It's not like a merge in, it's not like this has to be done right now.
Well, they want it as quick as possible, that's why he has to be on tonight, so the most we would bump you to because we have something private for the first June meeting is the second meeting in June. Agreed?
The 26th.
Do we have anything there?
The adoption of the municipal budget.
That's no problem.
I'm actually not available on the 26th, I know, so.
Can somebody else make the presentation?
No.
No.
So July.
Unless you give me.
What?
See if there's a laptop with the connector in the clerk's office.
Do you want to go see if there's a laptop over there?
We got a room full of people, why can't I talk?
Yeah, we can talk.
I'm just saying it's a chance, it may, I may, it may not, may not happen. But I want to go.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, ask the council what they got to say, ask the city manager, ask the attorney, go to public, and then you can search, and if, when we're done with public, if we find something, you can make the presentation then. Okay? That works?
All right, we're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Baz Anderson.
Yes, I would just like to say good evening to all of you and to wish you a very happy, safe holiday weekend, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
So I just wanted to acknowledge Trinity Church, they were our warming station this year, they were one of two in Monmouth County, they took care of 365 total people, kept people warm and fed them, and did an amazing job with a lot of volunteers and very little money, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Trinity.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing.
Mayor Moore?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the city manager?
Nothing, thank you.
Thanks. Matters from the city attorney?
Yes, one brief announcement. Once again this evening, the redevelopment plan amendment relating to the property located at 1201 Memorial Drive was slated for a public hearing and potential final adoption. It's ordinance 2024-11 on tonight's agenda. These actions had been postponed and adjourned from the prior two council meetings until tonight. We do not have a full council present this evening with Councilwoman Clayton being absent, and as I announced at the last meeting, the city is reviewing potential alternative options relating to access to and from that development, and we're still in the midst of evaluating the feasibility of that. So the council does intend to table the public hearing and the potential adoption of that ordinance once again until the next meeting, which will be held on June 12. So I just wanted everyone to know that in case you came here tonight just to speak at the public hearing for that ordinance, that is going to be table. However, you are more than welcome to make a comment during the regular public comment period if you wish, but there will be no action on that ordinance tonight, and that's it.
Great.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I motion to open up the meetings to the public?
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation is now open. Any member of the public wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there'd be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Don't talk, don't do his timer yet, just that we have a memorial, a Memorial Day Service Monday, I'm sorry, I should have said that, I should have acknowledged, we have a Memorial Day Service Monday in Fireman's Park at 9:00 a.m., so if you're available, please come out.
Can you do the timer after I say my name too?
Hold on one second, Eric. You're going to go look, Eric, I mean Eric. James, do me a favor, you know how to work the timer, come up here, please, bud, we're searching.
So while this is happening, my name's Eric Galoppo, 908 Fifth Avenue. Thank you, Council, for taking our comments, and thank you, everybody who's here to, here, hear what we have to say.
Eric, can you speak up a little bit?
Can I start? Can I have my 10 seconds back?
No, we heard you, you're, there you go.
All right, as you see, many neighborhood residents interested in the outcome of this plan, since we will live with the development for the rest of our lives, we won't, we want the outcomes to minimize the impacts on all of us rather than distributing it among us. Despite how some have sought to characterize our organizing, we are not here in opposition to the project. This past Sunday, we hosted a well-attended community meeting, and we commend Councilwoman Chapman for a mutually respectful discussion about the concerns we have on this project. To be clear, we support the redevelopment of the site, but we do not agree that appropriate data gathering and impact assessment has been performed, nor do we believe that the design of the building, the site, and the street have holistically considered, the, considered to prioritize the safety and quality of life of existing residents over those traveling in cars. The redevelopment plan will allow more than twice the number of units permitted by the current zoning. At a density of nearly 90 units per acre, there will be more units on this one site than the six blocks west of Memorial that surround it. At this density, it is clear the impacts will be significant, and the redevelopment plan should include specific strategies to mitigate the impact on residents. To us, it is clear that Memorial Drive is the best option for vehicular access. This will maximize the safety and comfort of existing residents, and Memorial Drive does not and never will have a single residential entrance, making it the most obvious choice of residential quality of life is the priority. To this point, there's been no data gathering of traffic or transportation data to accurately characterize the current existing conditions around the site. The city has relied on a single data point gathered in 2019 that shows a peak volume of 350 cars per hour. Current traffic volumes, speed on all streets, crash data analysis, and an on-street parking inventory would be a bare minimum for what we need. The city has not performed an impact assessment of traffic volume or on-street parking demand that would be generated by the development. If you're doubling the density and including new retail, we should at least sense, have a sense of how many cars and vehicle trips will be generated by the site and compete with residents and businesses for parking. We believe the redevelopment plan should include specific street design strategies to increase pedestrian and bike safety, manage new traffic behavior, and increase the supply of available parking. It is a choice not to explore these options and the design strategies needed to support them. Surely, there is enough creativity to envision a driveway on Memorial, a 300-foot-long block with a stop sign that has a speed limit of 20 mile, 25 miles per hour. We also believe the current striping plan for Memorial Drive should be revised to show a two-way bike lane on the east side. This is, the current arrangement is contradictory to both the Asbury Park Plan for walking and biking and the Monmouth County Mobility Plan. Why has the city chosen to contradict the recommendations of its own plans and the county plan when you have the opportunity to maximize safety for bikers up and down Memorial Drive and to minimize the impact on development?
Okay, finish your session. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any response?
Not this evening, probably at the next meeting, that's why we're saying to the presenter they can't make it tonight, the next meeting, we're hoping to have this with the developer and our professionals here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank the council for all the public ways that the boardwalk rules have been announced. It seems to be working. On Sunday at 4 o'clock, I counted 16 dogs, 12 bikes, two skateboards, and three cops in a driving minivan. Today, I counted two dogs, no bikes, and five cops in two minivans grouped together at the south end of the boardwalk. And I did receive a call from an officer ring this week, thanks to a call I know the city manager made, and he called on Monday and said he'll be assessing the traffic on Fourth. He understands my concerns, and I offered my house for the electronic sign as a place to put it, to see the traffic that flies down at 7:30 in the morning, and I was expecting him on Tuesday, but so far I've not seen any assessing or police activity on Fourth. As for the 1201 Memorial redevelopment plan, given how much should be reexamined, perhaps this delay would be a good use of everyone's time. The more questions arise, the less understanding of how those questions are going to be addressed to the betterment of the neighborhood. I know you would want everyone to be welcoming the 130 new neighbors we'll be all getting used to seeing on the street, and without adequately considering all the very complex issues at stake here, how can we feel that the neighborhood will be able to integrate this project well? Where do you expect the additional cars that don't have assigned spaces within the complex will be parking? And do we know if they're going to be dogs allowed in this complex? Anybody?
It'd probably be up to the HOA.
Okay.
If there is one.
Okay.
Yeah, question for you. You say three minivans, are they on the boardwalk?
Yeah, the little tiny cars.
Well, number one, if they're being paid by UEZ money, we're breaking the law, and number two, I don't think three police officers should be driving down the boardwalk together, so if we could correct that, it'd be appreciated.
Mayor, I think she means the electric golf cart that the police are patrolling in.
Right, but, but if we're paying for walking patrols, it's, UEZ is paying for walking patrols, not minivan patrols, right, and we don't want, you'd lose the UEZ money.
No, they were not, yeah, they were not walking, they were all in, in the golf carts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Hello, my name is Daniel Murphy, and I'm here to introduce myself and my venture, Quick Shield Stations. Quick Shield provides free and easily accessible sunscreen and hand sanitizer through our wellness stations. Skin cancer is the most common form of cancer, yet it's highly preventable through the use of sunscreen. We've all faced the issue of being outdoors and realizing too late that we forgot our sunscreen only to end up with a sunburn. Our stations address this common problem by ensuring that sunscreen's always within reach. The way we make this amenity completely free is by advertising on the panels of the stations. Our stations are completely weatherproof and battery-powered, designed to stand the test to any weather. We've already installed these throughout parks and townships in northern New Jersey, and we'll be at Martell's Tiki Bar this weekend, if you'd like to check out our concept. I believe our stations would be a great addition to the Asbury Park boardwalk and/or any city-sponsored events held outdoors. I'll submit a detailed proposal to the city tomorrow, which I hope can be expedited due to summer being so close. Thank you for your time and consideration, please let me know who to send a proposal to.
No, thank you, and send it to the city manager.
City man, thank you.
Hi, I'm Polly Shilga, 1100 Fifth Avenue. As a resident of Fifth Avenue and part of the neighborhood that we are not discussing tonight, the 1201 development, we welcome new neighbors, we think it's a wonderful thing to see expansion of residential space on Memorial Drive, making Memorial Drive, even in fact, in fact, planting a flag at that destination, at that location, so that there will be future development of residential properties along Memorial, making it a truly, truly a part of our city, a livable part of the city, making it accessible and equitable for everyone. I, I support what Eric was saying, what he said, about the entrance on Memorial Drive versus on Fourth and Fifth, partly because there are already bike lanes on Fourth and Fifth, meaning that residents will be coming out and crossing bike lanes as they enter and exit the building, if it were to be on the exit and entrances on Fourth and Fifth. And then on Memorial, it's my understanding that the developer is in support of the entrance and exit on Memorial, and even insofar as moving the building back a little bit to increase the sightline. We can have daylighting, meaning traffic can't be parked, cars can't be parked too close to the entrance and exit, and the bike lane on the opposite side of the street, on the track side of the street, means that no one entering or exiting will be crossing over a bike line. And then lastly, the exit from that building could be just a right turn, just like at the car wash, you can only turn right, and that wouldn't really inconvenience anybody. So the changes that could be made are really not that difficult, but my main, my main point is that I love the idea that we're looking at developing residential property on Memorial Drive, and I'd like to see this be done in a way that's looking at it as a comprehensive plan, so that Memorial from that point all the way down to the Transit Village, which I haven't heard too much discussion about lately, but our Transit Village designation is, is near the train station, development residential, some retail, it could be a dynamic and, and active and wonderful and equitable development opportunity, so that's it, pretty much, neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Kushner. I also live at 1100 Fifth Avenue. I was at the meeting at Erica Lippo's house, and Councilwoman Chapman was there, and I learned a lot of things there, and not the least of which is that the data that we're relying on for this project is five years old, that was done on Third Avenue. So the fact that we're not even doing current studies or whatever on traffic and so forth is really, really concerning, regardless of what the outcome may be. But at this meeting was urban planners, there were land use attorneys, and it just reminded me of, in the 10 years that we've lived in Asbury Park, is that we are really fortunate that we have a wealth of talent living within this community, the residents, the business owners. I have immense respect for all of you on the council. I know you're not in it for the money, and, but you're also the redevelopment authority, and I, meanness of all due respect, you are not the experts, and we have people that could be tapped into, and my observation has always been that there's a reluctance and a resistance to really tap in to these professionals who have made this community their home, or advocates who have really educated themselves and spent a lot of time going to other communities and see the way they do things and so forth. So my request would be is that bring these people into the conversation, I think too many decisions are made, you know, behind closed doors and were brought in late into the game, and my other request would be is that this piecemeal spot redevelopment of projects like this is just really, you know, I, my fear is, is that there's really no vision for Memorial Drive, and my understanding is, is that we, if we do end up with this property with entrance and exits on Fourth and Fifth Avenue, that sets a precedent for Memorial Drive, based on bad data, and then every other project has got to be done the same way. So let's look at Memorial Drive holistically, and let this one be the really start of doing it the right way, with data, with, with tapping into the, to the wealth of knowledge that we have within this community, your great leaders, and great leaders tap into the talent around them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Wolf, 1002 Fourth Avenue. That was an unintended segue from Michael. I'm here just to offer my services if I can be of use at any point. I negotiate pilots for a living, I work on very controversial development projects, and one of my jobs is to negotiate pilots with municipalities. Create, I create very close relationships by the time we're done with town managers and city councils and neighbors. And just last week, I brought, I brought a prop, just last week, I got approved a pilot for $46 million over 20 years, offer one of our projects, it was a labor of love, and it just brings up, of course, it's in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so different state, I work in many states, and I realize there's different laws and regulations, but it brought up a couple of thoughts that I had that might ultimately benefit the city. One, one of course is just the sheer magnitude of it. The town, this is a 10,000-person town that is getting this pilot, and they're thrilled with the dollar amount that we landed on. It was, again, a hard-fought negotiation, about three years, but I think both sides feel like it was a good outcome. And it can be difficult, I think, as a municipality, I've worked on both sides, both for municipality and as a developer, it can be difficult to speak developer language, they say that certain things will break the project budget, or, and there is a breaking point for a project, but if I could ever be of service in sort of helping to speak their language and kind of push them maybe on what the project really could afford, I'd love to help the town get as much as they can from, from these projects, understanding that you're limited, and I also get, you probably get it from both sides, because developers probably say you're very tough on them, and citizens probably wish you were even tougher. So, again, if I could ever be of service, please, I think a lot of you know how to reach me, I'm happy to just provide advice, or sit down with a developer, whatever kind of volunteer services I can provide, kind of being able to speak that language. I have, I have this document in case it would be of interest to you, it has a number of interesting features, I think, it was, as an interesting quirk, approved by a vote of the town. In Massachusetts, anything tax-related or fiscal-related actually goes to the community for a vote, so this 10,000-person town gathered in basically the high school auditorium, the biggest place they could accommodate, and the public actually voted for this pilot overwhelmingly. So, just kind of a positive note on some, you know, some certain things that maybe we could work together on, and happy to provide whatever service I can in support of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna wait until she's, in like November, December, we go out for fair and open process, so we went out for fair and open and we hired somebody to do the pilot, so you're more than welcome to apply next year, but I deeply appreciate your saying you'll help us, so thank you.
Hey, Council, my name's Mike Sedano, Fourth Avenue. I'm here to just briefly talk about 1201 Memorial, which borders Fourth Avenue. First off, thank you, Eileen, for taking time on Sunday to come and sit and listen to citizens in the, in the area that this will have an impact on, and I just want to let you know that the developer reached out to us, we had no contact with him, he reached out to us and said, whatever you want, okay, I'm ready to listen to what you want. You wanna, you wanna setback on Memorial, do you want Fourth and Fifth entrances, how do you want to make this plan work for the neighborhood? And he said, you know, at this point, I haven't heard from anyone from the city, so I'm just letting you know that he's talking to residents to assure them that he's real, he's willing to do whatever it takes to make this very wanted development work for the neighborhood. And when I, when you talk to him, I would also ask, what are we gonna do with the extra cars that are gonna come into this development that only supports one parking space a unit? And if the solution is to find street parking, I think that's gonna be a real impact 365 days a year on Fourth, Fifth, Langford, Memorial, and all the surrounding streets. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike, and just so you know, based on the feedback that I received at this meeting on Sunday, I created a bullet point of list and shared it with the council and city manager and others within the city, so thanks for all of your feedback.
Super, thanks.
So I'm gonna say, Michael, thank you, and I'm also gonna go, so what Christine said, sometimes developers can be, I'm gonna use the word wonky, for him to say, nobody from the city has talked to him, he's full of [BLEEP]. And that's why we couldn't tell Stuart, he could be on next council meeting, because we're gonna have the developer here, we're gonna listen to everything he's telling you and everything he's telling us. So there's a disconnect, and for him to tell you that deeply disturbs me because I know it's not true.
No, that's, that's great, thank you.
First, I'm on air, Fred. Oh, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I talked about the conflict of interest at the last meeting, I was wondering if he researched it. And the other thing I like to talk about, I like to deal with numbers, and I see that the 901 went from 188 to 788. I mean, those are dollars, 188,000 to 788, and that's an awful lot of, of jumping around here. And the other thing, and the insurance went up a million dollars, and also, the other part of the insurance went up $688. Now, my insurance went up in my own home, but you know what I did? I shopped around, and I got an insurance company that gave me the same policy for the amount I was paying. Now, you have to do things like that, that's what business people do, and you have to do it, to have these increases. And the other thing, I looked at the budget, there's no budget, I mean, like, you don't have the amount in, is there a reason for no amount? I, I don't know, but those are the three things I wanted to tell you about that stuck out in the bill resolution. It's a lot of money, and I think if, and the guy gave you, I don't know what insurance company, he came here and he gave you $500 after he raised your policy $1 million.
That's not true.
Well, he gave you 500.
Yes, and he said, within the past, I'm gonna have this wrong, we can go back to the tapes, the last three to four years, because of using them, they've saved the city a million dollars, so he has not increased his prices, what you're saying.
Well, you mean it's not going up a million?
Rita, finish, finish all your questions, then I'll try to answer.
Okay. Well, those are my three questions.
Okay, but when you, when you, and, I'm not picking on you, Rita, but you're, when you're throwing out numbers, I don't, I thought you were talking about the budget, now you're talking about the bills and claims, so when you say something went up from this to that, you gotta be more specific. Tell me what line item, and you only have to tell us tonight, you can like, call us during the week, emails, and we'll be prepared to give you the answer. Which line item went up a million dollars?
It was the insurance.
Insurance on the bills and claims of the budget?
Liability.
On the bills and claims or the budget?
It was liability, and the other one was, I guess, health. One was for the employees, and one was for liability.
Okay, but, but if, take it home, and if you see it's the bills and claims which we're gonna vote on tonight, it went up, if it went up like, say, a million dollars from two weeks ago to this, yeah, because we pay them, you know, different, like, we paid the Board of Education a million to some budgets, and some budgets, three, and some bills and claims, 3.2 million. So if it's bills and claims, it's perfectly legal. If it's the budget itself, which we're introducing tonight, and you're saying there's an increase in the insurance because we're under the state health benefit plan, you're probably absolutely right, but it's not a million dollars. So if you can give us more information in the future, we could answer the questions, and if you even like, you can call, Rita, you call me all the time, just say, John, I'm gonna ask this question tonight, and we'll have the answers for you.
I get tired, because I don't get the right answer.
But I'd rather, I'd rather give you the right answers, and you talked to Joanne, you can call Joanne tomorrow and talk to her.
Well, I tried to get it today, I couldn't get it, because there's no budget number.
Okay.
Why is that?
Because we're introducing it. Because we're introducing it.
And you, we don't know the number?
It will be up on the website tomorrow morning, as per state law. We're not breaking any laws, Rita. There's no bogeyman out there, and the budget's coming in. I think you'll be happy with our budget.
Okay. And how about the conflict of interest?
We saw no conflict of interest. We saw no conflict of interest.
No?
No.
Oh, is that a legal opinion?
Well, the last time I gave you the answer, you didn't believe it. The lawyer gave the same answer and you believed him, so I'll let the lawyer give you the opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought the issue was resolved at the last meeting, honestly. And I did not perform any further review since the last council meeting because I thought I'd been established that there wasn't any monetary compensation paid to the gallery that was brought up at the last meeting, but rather, any monetary compensation from the city was paid to the mural artists themselves. But, you know, I'm certainly happy to look at it further. I honestly didn't realize there was anything lingering at the end of the last meeting that needed to be resolved. So, that's why my answer is no, I didn't do any bother.
But there was money. We, you approved the money here.
Compensation to artists.
Oh, yes.
For the murals.
Okay, Rita, Fred just said, "Well, research it." And when he researches it, that means he's charged by the hour, so don't complain next week when the bill goes up.
You're not gonna send me the bill, are you?
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1034 Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, President of WCC Historic Renovation Association, formerly known as the West Side Community Center. I am standing here, again, reaching my hand out. We missed our last meeting. There were some rescheduling issues on behalf of the city, and I'm hoping to reestablish another meeting so we can sit down and see how the West Side Community Center and the city council can work together. Also, I am encouraged by sitting in this room, listening to everybody in this room, and it reminds me of the inclusionary zoning and how we established the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition that started in my living room and then spread out throughout the church, throughout the community, as I sat with all kinds of professionals, literally finding where we can densify, how we can add, and how we can work together as residents of Asbury Park to make an inclusionary plan for everybody in Asbury Park. So, I'm inspired to reach out and do it again, community-based, because the community is we the people, and we the people decide how our community runs, including the council, because they're the people too. But again, we hold all the power in our form of government in this country of the United States. So, I'm saying that to say, we don't have to wait for approval to put together a commission. It has been done, it has been done by me, it has been done by a lot of people in this room, so we can reach out and we can do it again, to have a cohesive plan for the compass, the whole one point, I think, four square miles of Asbury Park, how the community and everybody in the community wants it to be seen and wants it to be home. So, in that case, that is pretty much it. Thank you, City Council, for, again, I'm looking forward to the next rescheduling of our meeting, and I am looking forward to working with a lot of you community people to build a plan for Asbury Park. Thank you.
Yep. And we're sorry we had to cancel that meeting, but somebody of accordance couldn't make it, so we're gonna reschedule.
Yep, we will.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Beth Lambden. I live at 905 Sunset Avenue, and I just quickly wanted to go on the record in support of comments made by several of my neighbors, so not to be too redundant when things are already quite eloquently put. But the reasoning that's been given for why the entrance should go a memorial drive for 1201 is very compelling, makes a lot of sense. And particularly, the suggestion or the request that we aligned with the other recommendations that have already been made by two organizations to keep the double bike lane on the east side also not only works well in synergy with that other suggestion, even on its own, it seems to make quite a bit of sense. I also just want to reiterate, you know, how happy we are to see this development. I also agree with that. And just working together to ensure that the impact is as low to the existing and the future residents as it can be. And also, you know, reiterating the kind of disbelief that maybe some of these decisions are being based on 2019 data and that we haven't really done a true impact study, to the extent that that is still a possibility. I would also support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Scully, 1307 Fourth Avenue. I'm here to talk about 1201 Memorial. I know there's been a lot of comments from my fellow residents. I'm probably gonna repeat a lot of those comments and those facts, but I think the importance of those need to be repeated again for the record. So, again, 130 units, there's one parking space allotted for each unit, and then there's very limited parking allotted for guests of those residents and also the commercial space. There's no consideration for moving trucks, delivery trucks. In Monmouth County, the average number of cars per residential unit is two. 130 units are comprised of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. So, it's reasonable to think that there will be more than one vehicle per unit. Again, there's been no consideration for where these cars are gonna be parked. As my fellow residents have said, the council is relying on a single point of data, which is a traffic study, which is, or sorry, traffic count, which is exactly what its name is, just a traffic count that was performed five years ago. I think it's reasonable to say that in five years, Asbury has changed greatly and the traffic patterns have changed greatly. Additionally, that traffic count was performed on not Fourth and Memorial, not Fifth and Memorial, but Third and Memorial. This council has repeatedly, repeatedly refused to conduct a traffic impact study. If the council on the June 12th meeting says, "Well, the reason for that is the cost," then I ask the council, "Have you put it out for RFQ? Do you know what the cost of a traffic impact study will be?"
Who said it was cost?
I know. I'm saying that if that is your response on June 12th. If your response on June 12th is that you don't want to waste taxpayers' money on a traffic impact study, this current plan has potentially up to a 30-year pilot program, which would certainly affect taxpayers' money. I know the law does not give the council under the Redevelopment Act the authority to force the developer to do a traffic impact study, but certainly, from the comments that have been said by the other residents, it's not unreasonable to ask the developer to do the impact study. If the impact study comes back and says Fourth Avenue, the only entrance and exit currently on the plans is the least impactful, then at least we have something to point to. Right now, there's nothing to point to other than a five-year-old traffic count. So, if this council truly wants transparent governance, then I urge them, urge you, to perform a traffic study or request the developer to do so. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Scully, one second. I just, I didn't hear you. And what'd you say, Monmouth County, two?
Monmouth, right. The average, the average number of vehicles for a resident unit in Monmouth County is two.
Okay, but that's not dictated by Monmouth County?
No, 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 it's just a study.
I read that wrong in the letters.
Yeah, I can send you the, I can send you the link.
No, no problem. Thank you. And part of the reason we're not talking tonight until the 12th is because we asked for an impact study. That we should be here by the 12th, from the developer.
Carrie Butch, 500 Dale Lake Drive. The numbers that Rita were referring to, you're gonna be voting on tonight in a budget amendment. So, those are the numbers that she's referring to. The decline from 182 to 780,000, a million dollars more for general liability. Those are all these things that you're voting on tonight. So, I think that's what she was trying to clarify. But I wanted to ask a question about jobs. I wanted to ask, because I have a couple kids in my circle, right, that I've been working with, with the Asbury Park reporter, that would like to have summer jobs. There used to be a jobs program in Asbury Park. Is there a summer youth jobs program? I remember it was, for a while, it was like Tamara Richardson, I think. So, but do we have that anymore? And, because it feels like, it feels like it would be a great investment to be working with kids and getting them jobs, especially now that there's a lot more jobs in Asbury Park, right? So, to have a way of getting them to the waterfront. I don't know, do we have a coordinated effort?
Is that all your questions?
Um, I think I have one more, and I'm trying to think of what it is.
Take your time.
I think it's about the police reports. So, every month, you have a police report on the, on the, in the executive session. But is there a way for us to find out what's happening other than to, you know, last week, I stumbled upon understanding that there were five incidents with the overdoses for the last council meeting because of the sign. I asked a question about the sign. But is there a consistent way that you could report out what's happening from a police standpoint? We don't, or could we work together on that? Like, I know that Ellen Carroll has mentioned that we don't, other towns are very forthcoming with their police blotters, but Asbury isn't yet, and I'm not saying that you're not going to because you're the most transparent, you know, you value that, you've talked about that. So, is there a way for us to get that information? So, that's all my questions.
Okay, well, let me start off by, number one, thanking you, explaining what Rita wanted. So, what Rita was talking about was increase to temporary budget prior to the budget adoption. So, we allocate so much money, and then when we're running out of money, we have to allocate more money until we adopt the budget. So, the number did increase, but, you know, we've got to pay these bills. So, Rita, you're right, it did increase, but you were talking about 2024-245, increase to temporary budget prior to budget adoption. So, there's like, you know, there's some payroll, there's some legal fees, there's some liability insurance, went up $10,000, no, $400,000, but these are bills that we had to pay in a timely fashion, and we didn't adopt the budget yet. So, that's why, Rita, thank you. As far as the police blotter, that's the first time I'm hearing, like, we're not cooperating with the Coaster, so I, we'll look into that. And as far as like the report I get, I don't, why can't that be made public?
I don't want to say that you're not cooperating with the coaster. I have heard that it's easier to get information from other towns, and in my experience, we do get, we do get some, we, there is a little bit of a lag time, even on issues that are dangerous, you know?
Okay.
You know, and there is a state law now that says, if there's a danger to the community, that has to be released within 24 hours. So, I'm not here to throw stones or anything.
No, no, no.
I'm just sort of saying, I know that you guys get the police report. Is there a way for us to somehow get that out?
It's a good question. We're gonna get the answer.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not the lawyer, right, Rita? I'm not the lawyer, but I see, I don't see why we couldn't share this with the public. There might be a couple things that might have to be redacted.
Right, redacted. And I can review that with the city attorney.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we'll get to it.
No. Thank you so much.
It's a good question. And then, what was your...
The kids, the youth program.
Yeah. What are we doing with workforce? We are doing workforce, Lillian.
Okay. With respect to the internship program, I'd like to start up something next year again.
Okay.
But we do have, under the UEZ program, we do have an internship program under that. So, Sylvia, Sylvia Choffey is the coordinator for UEZ, and you can speak with her about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have to get to the microphone.
Yeah, that's the junior lifeguard.
The city, every year, does a big job fair with the high school, where we coordinate all of our departments, GPW, police, fire, lifeguard, and all of our departments go into the high school and then with applications and local businesses. I mean, and usually, we're able to pick up maybe a dozen kids, a dozen kids from that.
I'm pretty sure we still have openings at the beach department, so if you know anybody who's working papers or 14 that need a job, and you run your program.
The ambassador program.
Do you still need people?
Yes.
So, through the recreation program, we hire ambassadors and counselors to help the children. So, get in touch with Lisa Floyd if anybody knows anybody looking for a job.
I think it's up, I think they're up on our website.
Yeah, I think, well, these are on our website, but I don't read the website.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. Annette Cripe, 403 Second. This is not specific to 1201, although it does involve 1201, also Holy Spirit, and frankly, the Baltic, the GN, pretty much all of the developments. And in regards to parking, and I had tea with Ms. Chapman last week, and she was great. But I guess, really, just to go on the record that it's not just one development. It seems like it's every development that is not addressing how much parking needs to be included with it, right? Look, we have a lot of legacy apartment buildings and multi, you know, multi-units developments that don't have the space, right? 120 years ago, whenever they were built, people did not have two cars, right? But today, they do. We can't retrofit into existing buildings. But we can ensure that as we build today, we build with adequate parking, right? Holy Spirit's gonna put in 90 units? I don't know. You know, I haven't seen the plans, but, and I, and I've heard arguments, I'm like, "Well, there was some low-income units and they won't have cars." I'm like, "I think that's a spurious argument as well," right? You know, whenever you, you know, maybe a studio only has one car, right? Maybe. But, you know, two and three bedrooms, right, you're bringing in families, right? You know, and then we're throwing pilots out everywhere. And I think arguably, we're a little bit past having to incent some of our development that way, you know? People love Asbury, they love to come here. We, they're dying. Our housing stock is so low because there's not, people are desperate to buy here or rent here. You know, we pay more than almost every other town in New Jersey for schooling, and yet, when we put in pilots, we're not contributing to that. So, it's existing homeowners that are carrying the cost of educating our students as well, right? So, really, so parking and pilots, but, you know, the Baltic, a GN, there were two blocks, a couple of blocks off the beach, again, you know? Why isn't it two spots per car, two spots per unit? Oh, there's more. But that's, but really, in general, I suppose, just going on the record for that, love the coffees with, you know, with a council member and appreciate the opportunity in a smaller session to be able to talk. One other thing, can we put zebra stripes on Asbury across Hack? It's like, it's, like, people take that last light on brand, and then they're like, "I'm so close to the beach." And then they speed, and there's no actual zebra stripes for pedestrians when you cross Hack. And people have hit like 60 going down those last few blocks.
Okay, if you want to...
That's it.
If you want to talk to James Banana, he'll talk to you about exactly where you mean and what you mean. And then, as far as like the pilots, I think the council has given out a pilot, except the Beach Trump, which we have to by 2002 agreement, to anybody that doesn't give us affordable housing. We need affordable housing, and people will build, but they won't give us affordable housing unless they get a pilot. So, it's like, what do you want? I mean, what...
It's a tough balance.
It is a tough balance. So, that's the reason we do give the pilots, because they're giving us 20%, and we're sticking to 20%. GLD tried to give us 8%, 12%, 16%, they finally up to 20%, and they were gonna be told no. I mean, so, we're sticking to 20% because we do need affordable housing. It is a tough balance, but that's the reason some people are getting pilots.
And it's legitimate, and I appreciate the pressure you're under in finding that balance between, you know, maybe people actually live in Oregon, Asbury, too, right?
Right.
Almost impossible.
That's the goal.
And which I, I admire.
Okay, I'm gonna have it. Thank you. Make sure you talk to James.
And thank you. I enjoy the coffee with the council person as well. I love that residents come out and provide feedback, and then we could take back to the council. So, thank you for showing up.
Hi. I'm glad to be here, Bernard Dotson. I live at 1304 Fifth Avenue. I actually don't have anything to say. I just wanted to make sure that my name went on record, that I'm in accord with Eric and others that have talked about the development on 1201 Memorial. Thank you.
You'll get a gold star.
Thanks, Bernard.
Anybody else? Motion to close?
Second.
No. Are you getting up?
Go ahead.
Carla Gizi, 924 Sunset, has a...
Carla Gizzy, 924 Sunset, has a neighbor, in the neighborhood, resident owner, has also a business person on the shops at Sunset Point, which is neighboring to 1301, 1301 neighbors to 1201. And speaking for the businesses, we welcome, obviously, we welcome growth in the town as well as all the new 130 residents. However, as being said, that two cars are more common, I'm more concerned about the 130 cars that are going to be on the street because as of today, the streets are full on a normal basis, which is good. We, the customers can pull up and shop, they can eat, run and pick up, and the residents have parking, the employees have parking, but with 130 cars, I don't understand where people will park. And if there's no parking, the businesses will all fail because the reason people to come in, it's a local neighborhood, a lot of people walk, but they come to that side of town because it's convenient and easy to be in that strip, patronize all those businesses that kind of get neglected because everyone goes to, the other parts of town have so much more parking, even though it's lacking everywhere. And obviously, the residents probably should get first dibs, but where will everyone else go? So I'm just thinking that part of that study, the restriping, potentially head-in parking for Sunset Point was mentioned that potentially would help add, not Sunset Point, the next block like Sunset Point in front of the new building to allow for more parking and maybe more research done to allow for more parking all over, because it just doesn't seem like the residents will have anywhere to go. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Before we go, it looks like Stuart is going to make his presentation. So the public portion of the meeting's closed for anything else, but if anybody has any questions about Stuart's presentation, you can ask questions about that. I've got to comment on a couple of things. Parking is a problem all over the city. Parking's a problem in CBD. Right now, the Asbury Hardware store is for sale. If they sell that, somebody could build a beer garden and provide zero parking. I've been against that for 10 years. This project, I voted no on. It's public record. I thought it was too dense and too close to a residential neighborhood. I was concerned about the parking also. I live on 4th Avenue. I go by every day and I see all the cars from the Board of Education where there is no parking on the 9, 10, and 1100 blocks. So, but we're getting all the information you asked for. Some of, we got all your letters, thank you. Some of the stuff I agree with, and I'm speaking for John Moore, one person, some of the stuff I agree with, I don't agree with the annual parking because we'll lose too much of the road, the road's not, not wide enough, that can all be discussed. And the one thing, and Mike made a great statement, we have so many talented people in the city, and we do. And when this went to the planning board a year or two ago, I would say there was four planners and an architect on the planning board that said, well, add the two buildings, the two commercial spaces on each end, do this, do that. So as much as we okay it, then it goes to the planning board and anybody within 200 feet is notified. And that's where, okay, that's where, you can correct me next week, that's where the tires hit the road. That's where the planning board, which is made up of very good professionals, asks the tough questions and put in what they think it should be like. So again, I thank you, and Eric will talk after the meeting, but I thought I was correct, but no. How? Since I said I cut you off, how, but be short.
How what?
You disagreed with what I said.
The planning board does not provide notice to you.
We don't provide?
No.
Okay, the applicant does, but people were notified?
No.
No, oh no, then I apologize.
We learned about it on Sunday.
Then I apologize, I'm wrong. And I love being corrected. But again, I got to compliment Eric and the rest of the planners and architects on the planning board that's made many of these recommendations.
Correct. I made recommendations that you heard tonight at the planning board.
And you made recommendations to put in the two stores at 500 square feet, so we'll go there also. Okay, enough, that part's closed, we have a presentation.
All good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're now onto a presentation by Stuart Copperwise for the Special Improvement District in the downtown area of Asbury Park. Take it away Stuart.
Good evening, everybody.
Can you pull that to a, yes, there you go.
Good evening, can you hear me? Oh, great. Thank you Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, staff, and guests, I appreciate it. I apologize for this snafu, but technical difficulties sometimes exist. But we got through it and thank you Andy Carras for supporting me with your computer. I'm here tonight at the request of several council members and property owners and developers within Asbury Park to talk about special improvement districts. And the first thing I want to say is that, as we all know, we live in the state of New Jersey, and the state of New Jersey is special. So consequently, they're called special improvement districts. Everywhere in the country, they're called business improvement districts. So you may see some sort of, sometimes the acronym SID versus a BID. They're one and the same issue. It's just that in New Jersey, again, we're special, so we call them special improvement districts. And we'll define exactly what an improvement district is all about and how they can be created. And that is the process of this meeting today. So I've been working with improvement districts for more than 30 years and with governments, and there are more than 35, I've worked with more than 35 improvement districts in the state of New Jersey, and been able to produce $90 million in grants and funding for specific projects in improvement districts. Some of the improvement districts throughout the state are, as you can see here, Fort Lee, Jersey City, Bergenfield, Hackensack, there is Steel Lane, Teaneck, and downtown, and Newark, and Flemington. I've worked and supported all of those over the years. We actually have a gentleman in the audience right now who lives in Asbury Park, who's the Executive Director of the Red Bank Improvement District. So there are improvement districts in local areas, and there are also improvement districts in Belmar as well, and other municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. So what is a special improvement district? An SID, it's a public-private partnership. It's basically modeled on the shared maintenance program of many suburban malls. What they do is they provide services, except the major difference is, is that there are multiple property owners and business owners, so they all come together to align themselves to collectively plan for their future. So they take, what they're doing is they're taking their own collective destiny into their own hands, working to help revitalize the, excuse me, revitalize economic growth in their particular community or district. And there are about 100 new improvement districts in the state of New Jersey and more than 1,000 in this, in the United States. So what does an improvement district do? And this to me is one of the most important things, excuse me. It basically, what does it do? It, excuse me. There are mostly 17 different items in the statute that is creating an improvement district at the state level. But what we like to look at is the street level, sort of the 10-foot look, street view, what's in front of you. So it works with maintenance, it works with public safety, business development, marketing, and community service landscaping and capital improvements. What you see in front of you is what you're going to look at mostly, and that's what you want to try and improve, and then collectively you want to be able to do that, and that's how the improvement district is put together. The arrangements from this is that it's a cleaner, safer, more attractive business area, it's a steady, reliable funding, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, for supplemental services and programs, and it gives the ability to respond quickly to particular changing needs in the community, and it also has been shown to increase property values and decrease vacancy rates. SID versus a merchants association or chamber of commerce, they kind of work hand in hand with each other, but as you can see, a merchants association does not offer a continuous source of funding and its voluntary contribution, contributions as well. And as most of you know, improvement, chambers of commerce sort of work on an 80/20 basis, you know, 80% of the, of the funding comes from 20% of the people. And that's what it is. And if you remember years and years ago, I was very familiar with Asbury Park Chambers of Commerce, as I was the Executive Director a couple of decades ago. All right, but an improvement district question, provides a steady, reliable source of funding, and what the key is, is that all businesses, all property owners within an improvement district must contribute, there are no free rides. Will municipal services be reduced? Absolutely not. That's why it's no, 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 no. The services provided by the improvement district are supplemental, they're in addition to what the municipality is providing. If your SID provides another sanitation services, it will still be, still be seeing the same level of service from your municipality, but this would be in addition to that particular services. Oh, this is a good one. How is an improvement district formed? It's formed based upon three different phases. Phase one is outreach, it's basically, excuse me, it's planning. And planning consists of review of what an SID is, questions, surveys, putting together a wish list, developing a mission statement, developing priorities, types of services in different categories, then you work with a list of assessed values from the municipality, and then you talk about budget categories and budget samples, boundaries, who should be included, but more importantly, who should be excluded? In other words, do you want to exclude people or do you want to include people? Those are the determinations that will be made by the steering committee in terms of a feasibility study. Then eventually you'll go into phase two, which is outreach, and outreach is basically going into having a public hearing on the process and then getting feedback from that again, putting out more surveys, putting that into the plan, and then working with the steering committee for them to put together the final report. And the third one is the final report of the feasibility study to make the recommendation or not to make a recommendation, and that is the legislative authority of the improvement district. And it's formed by the council through an ordinance that is adopted by the municipality in the central Asbury Park. Who oversees an improvement district? It has a board of trustees. It usually becomes, it includes property owners, business owners, civic leaders, public officials, and it must have a representative from the governing body. A majority, however, should be property owners since they're the ones who are making the primary decisions regarding investments in their particular district. The district management corporation, which is a DMC, is created by an, by the ordinance, and it's so named in the ordinance, and it files a certificate of, of business with the state of New Jersey, and then they hire an administrator to run the improvement district. Running that improvement district and district management corporation is basically done by a variety of, again, as I said, business and property owners, and they all should be working together and doing so. This is an interesting concept, and I go through this all the time with a variety of different individuals, and this has happened over the years, and I think as council members you can probably understand this as well. Property owners are concerned about covering their debt service, retailers want more customers, the shoppers wants more goods and services and enjoy it like people were talking about today. How are we going to go shopping? Where are we going to go? Parking, et cetera. Main Street is an inviting shopping area, the municipality wants jobs and ratables, and zoning determines the uses. However, and this is the key, the municipality does not provide and choose the tenants, it is done by the property owners. And consequently, the property owners like to get together and an improvement district helps them put together a retail market analysis, bring in people and understand who they want to be putting into their retail spaces. So how is a SID paid for? Funds are generated by a special assessment, that's why they're called special. It is an assessment, it's filled and collected by the municipal government. The annual assessment is unique to each particular improvement district based upon their budget and services. The amount paid by each property owner is determined by a formula that the improvement district creates themselves, and they're usually based upon property size, value, location, and services that are being provided. This is one of the things that I always were very excited about, and that's that the role of a, of a SID is to clap. Coordinate services, liaison between government and stakeholders, which are the property owners, where the money is coming from, assist in redevelopment, zoning, planning, information, and, and, and working on dissemination of information, provide value to the businesses and, and researchers. And then there is the next item, which is cheer. And cheer is something that capitalizes on programs, in other words, providing brick and mortar money, help make the corridor a destination through marketing and public relations, encourage partnerships, enlist community support, and revitalize beautification. I have always been known to, this brings up a story that I'd like to say real quickly, it's, it's about Noah. And most people are familiar about Noah and the, and the ark and everything else. And if Noah was living today in the United States and he was asked to build another ark, and, and you only have six months to do so, here's what would happen. In six months, they're up, and the Lord roared, and he said, Noah, where's my ark? And Noah said, forgive me, Lord, things have changed since the last time. I need a building permit. The inspector says I need a sprinkler system. My neighbor says I'm violating parking and zoning, the height setbacks, et cetera. The DOT demanded a bond for cost of moving power lines, et cetera. And the Lord, there's abandon cutting local trees to save the owls. Then there is the animal actors who are suing me. Noah, the Lord said, I, where, where, there's more, there's more, Lord. The EPA ruled I need an impact study on the flood. Human Rights Commission filed a complaint, not hiring enough minorities, and the unions won't let me, so let my sons work. Not to mention immigration, who is checking greed guard status on those who want to work? Finally, the IRS seized my assets, saying I'm trying to leave the country with endangered species. So forgive me, Lord, it'll take about 10 years to build. The skies cleared, a rainbow appeared, Noah asked, oh, you're not going to destroy the world anymore? My Lord? And the Lord replied, no, the government beat me to it. And the reason I'm saying in that story and bring this story up is because, quite frankly, an improvement district helps resolve all those particular issues. It works with the business and property owners and the government to help create a more enjoyable downtown and, and business area. There are 78 million baby boomers, this is just what's going on, Brickings Institute, there's an 85, 83% of net households are to be childhoods by 2025. And what that means is that they want someplace to go. And where do they want to go? They want to go into the downtowns. And that's why Asbury Park is growing by leaps and bounds. And that's why the improvement district is something that some business and property owners and some council members as well are looking at. It's self-determination for the future, it makes it possible for property owners and members of the business community to control the revitalization of their own particular district, and it's been determined to be the most qualified mechanism to encourage growth and improvement for them. The next step would be for the creation of a steering committee, which would review all the options of a feasibility study to determine if creating an improvement district is the right thing to do for the city of Asbury Park. And with that, the future growth of the state is something, to support economic growth and revitalization and development where infrastructure and transposition exists, what we need to do is clap, cheer, and they will appear. As I mentioned in the beginning, an improvement district is a mall without walls, and this is one of those improvement districts in Journal Square in Jersey City. Thank you very much for your time. I'm open to any questions and comments, and I look forward to working with you in the future. And as you can see, there's my name and number. If anybody in the community wants to speak to me afterwards or answer, ask any questions, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you again for Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and the community and staff. Thank you.
Thank you Stuart.
Thanks Stuart.
Thank you.
I have two quick questions, I'll show you.
No, go ahead.
So property owners, not the actual businesses, contribute or contribute to the SID? Am I understanding that right? So the owner of the building, not the little business in the building?
The property owners are the individuals who will be assessed from the improvement district. It is up then to the property owner to determine whether or not they want to pass through that assessment or portion of thereof, or percentage of whatever it happens to be. But the business owners are not assessed directly. They are, just like they pay rent into their area, the property owner may or may not determine to ask for additional rent to help support it. Most of the times, they do not. That's what I'm just giving you.
And then how, like, a SID would be Cookman, or would it be Cookman and Maine? Or it can be whatever?
See, that's the, that's the great question, and it could be wherever it is. Right now, I'm working in a town in Ridgewood, and we're looking at all the entire municipality. And Ridgewood is a big city, but quite frankly, it has different districts and it, and there's different areas. I just did Hoboken, which is a small city, but they are, everybody in Hoboken, all the businesses are in, all the streets are in. Princeton, which is one that was just created two years ago, all of their improvement, all their businesses in all of the outlining areas, they, what they created is sub-areas. But that's something that the steering committee, in terms of the feasibility study, will make a determination and recommendation as to whether or not they want to include Cookman, Bangs, Memorial Drive, what we're talking about, Springwood Avenue, you know, there are many different, Main Street, it, they will look at all those options and then make a determination as to who, what services first they want to contribute, you know, contribute to and deliver. And then from there, who should not be getting those services and who should be? And those are the type of things that they will make the recommendation on.
If a property owner passes it along to a business, then does the business get a vote?
No, no, there's, there is no vote.
It's taxation without representation.
Well, that's a very good statement, Mayor. And there's state statutes on that, and there's actually state law, and it went to the Supreme Court dealing with improvement districts. And the improvement district is called a special assessment, it's not a tax. A tax is appealable, and it's working, and it works completely differently as you just mentioned. However, the assessment- However, the assessment, like you may do, Stu, a sidewalk assessment or a sewer assessment on properties, those are assessments. And the improvement district works with assessments. And that's why, that's created that way in the state statute.
And Red Bank has a SID, right?
Yes, it does.
For the whole?
Just for the downtown.
Downtown. And Asbury's never had a SID. I feel like this topic has come up before.
This topic has come up before. And in fact, with Councilman, Councilwoman Chapman. And I discussed this earlier. I found a letter that I think she wrote about 15 years ago discussing this issue. And I was actually present as well with some other property owners to discuss this.
But we've never had one.
We never, never discussed, we never discussed putting together a feasibility study to review creating an improvement district.
And do you have to get like a certain percentage of buy-in? Like, let's say we said it was a downtown SID. Would you need a certain, like, what if nobody downtown? You, you, is there a vote?
There is no vote. The vote is only by ordinance itself. But what happens is that you do want, obviously, buy-in and you want transparency. So what happens is the steering committee moves together, as I mentioned earlier. And then they will hold a stakeholder meeting. Sometimes they hold one or two. And they'll have it here in the council chambers. And everybody will come to voice their opinion about the improvement district. And letters are sent out to every property owner within the potential district. So sometimes it could be 300, 400, 500 letters that are going out.
So how much would they have to, would a owner have to invest or pay?
That's to be determined. Some of them can be as little as $150,000 on an annual basis. Red Bank, I think you're $550,000 and change. Some of them are over $1 million. It all depends on the services that they wanted to deliver and who is, how many people are involved. The average usually is, you know, somewhere around $1,000 on an annual basis. But it all depends on the size of the property and the size of the budget.
Oh, so it's like square footage? Like, so Alhouse would pay differently than, say, Interwoven?
It's either based upon square footage. Again, it's a determination or it could be based upon assessed value of the property or taxes paid on the property. I personally like to put them in, tag them to or to assess, excuse me, taxes paid because I've never seen taxes go down in a municipality. So consequently, an improvement district budget is always going up, even though it's a minimal amount. At least it's not staying stagnant because cost of services go up at the same time as well. And all these comments that you're making are things that the steering committee hashes out over a period of nine to 12 months. That's how long the process takes. And then they will make a recommendation. And then the ordinance has to go in front of the council for public hearing and adopt it, you know, through two different sessions, an introduction and then a public hearing.
I'm not real clear on the services.
Sorry?
I'm not very clear on the services that SID would provide that would be different than what this municipality would provide to these businesses?
Right. And that's, that's a good question. Again, the services that improvement district provide is in addition to what the municipality is already providing. So what happens is that the improvement district would create its own marketing plan on top of what the municipality is doing. It would have a budget. They would hire a public relations firm. They may do that, those type of things. They may do additional cleaning services. In other words, you're providing municipal garbage pickup and cleaning, but they probably may want more. They may provide signage and facade grant improvements to different buildings and property owners who are able to do that. They may run different events in town. Just as the chamber works, working hand in hand with the chamber. But then they can run a restaurant program. I know we have Restaurant Week in Asbury Park. But this could be something completely different where the improvement district offsets the cost of a prefixed dinner from a $50 dinner. You buy a gift card for $50, a $50 gift card for $30. You get the $50, but the improvement district picks up the difference. These are just some of the different programs that can be run.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I was wrong twice with Eric, which I apologize. So I'm probably going to be wrong with this and go totally gray. I think around 2010, 11, the city approached downtown first and said it was not receptive well, which I couldn't care less. It's just.
I don't know. There's some property owners. Property owners and business owners here. It could be that they did not want to. I think you may be correct, Mayor, about that. I know now there are some businesses and property owners that are very interested in doing something of this nature. And consequently, they asked me to sit down with some of the council members and, you know, discuss this. And now the council has asked me to make this presentation. The next step I said would be to, if you're willing to move forward with this, is put together a letter from you, Mayor, to a variety of residents, civic, excuse me, business owners, property owners, civic leaders in town, and ask them to attend another meeting similar to this to see if they want to participate in the steering committee.
You should also present, so we have a business committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we should put you on the agenda for the next meeting so you can talk about it there. We had it this morning, but we'll put you on for that. Remind me, Stuart, and I'll get you on that agenda.
I want me to remind you. I can't remember what to bring here. No, I won't.
Somebody remind.
I'll remind you.
I think we should move forward and explore it because it seems to have many benefits. So do you want to talk to the business committee first and then we'll do the letter? Or be, when's your next business committee?
So now, when's our next business committee? Oh, two months, so.
I think we could do a little bit sooner. We can, we can certainly invite, how about this? We can invite the business committee to whatever meeting we decide to put together. And I'll work with the council members. Whoever you want to be as your point person, I will work with that particular council member to put together the letters. I have draft letters. I already send that to Councilwoman Chapman if she would like to look at that. And then we can just move forward. And that's about it.
So figure out the next step and let's do it. Have to say it's a letter from me, drafted, I signed.
Well, one of the other things that you have to consider as well is actually hiring me to do the work. So I can't.
Forget the letter. I said we're having a tax increase.
Well, this will, this will help make it more palatable.
No, it won't. It doesn't help us whatsoever. There'll be public questions.
Yeah.
So let's open it up to the public now. If anybody from the public has any questions about this presentation, this presentation only, please get to the microphone and ask your questions.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Zuckerman. I live at 600 Heck Street. I am the person that Stuart referred to earlier about being the Asbury Park resident who runs the Red Bank Special Improvement District, better known as the Red Bank River Center. However, I'm here tonight on my own capacity as a resident who lives just adjacent to downtown and also as the most immediate past president of downtown New Jersey, which is a nonprofit organization, a small nonprofit that works to advance the interests of downtowns throughout the state. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. I really don't have a question, just a couple of comments. One, I know Stuart for probably a decade now. I think Stuart's formed more special improvement districts in the state of New Jersey than probably anybody. So he's certainly extremely capable of forming such an organization. And I did want to address the whole issue about the businesses for the Deputy Mayor Quinn and Councilwoman Bez Anderson. Yes, it is true that special improvement districts are mostly, well, are, are, the money that gets raised by them is from the property owners unless they pass through their assessment to the business. However, I could tell you as a director of a special improvement district, we're working night and day on behalf of our businesses, not on behalf of the properties. In fact, in Red Bank, I really, there's a lot of absentee property owners that I've never even met. But I know, hopefully, most of the business owners in our district. And I think that special improvement districts can work hand in hand with chambers of commerce, with other, with the UEZ. I don't, I don't think that it's necessary to, I don't think that we necessarily have to say that, well, we already have a UEZ, we already have a chamber. We don't need a SID. I think they complement each other. And I think that's one of the great things about a special improvement district. As a resident, I would love to see one formed here in Asbury Park. And, you know, I'm happy to answer questions as the steering committee gets together. And if people have, you know, any kind of questions or concerns, I'm certainly knowledgeable about the subject. So I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Just to your point in terms of chambers and business communities, et cetera, a lot of the improvement districts work hand in hand with chambers as well. I mean, a lot of some of concerns that the chamber is going to be usurped or certain things of that nature. That never happens. What happens is they work hand in hand with each other and they support each other. Yes.
As a former business owner, what happens when a business owner in that district, not a business owner, but a property owner in that district decides not to, that they don't want to join it? Do you go around them and create like a donut?
No, that's why I mentioned earlier in terms of the chamber versus an improvement district. On the state statute, when an ordinance is passed to create the district, everybody is included in the district that they say is part of the list.
So they don't have a choice?
So they do not have a choice. They must pay the assessment. And that is why the statute was created to give the businesses and property owners the ability to create a district where everybody participates. No freeloaders.
Thank you.
Rita, you can't have a question?
I just want to say that I've known Stu for many, many years. It's over 25. I know he's a good man. He's a good family man. And he's always been a very nice and truthful person. And I, I just want you to know, he lived around the corner from me for a long time. And thank you, Stu.
Thank you, Rita, for those comments. You're actually making me tear.
He also lives around the corner from me.
Rita gets a gold star.
Hello. My name is a question and a statement. A few years ago, when we were going through the rent control ordinances, plus we've, I've been talking about a SID for a little while with gentlemen and a couple of other people for a good few years. But just to bring up something, speaking to Satman when we were doing rent control, he was speaking about a SID having something inside where some of the funding can be used towards subsizing affordable housing. I don't know if that was possible. I didn't really dig too deep into it, right? Because at the time, it wasn't cohesive.
It's legally possible. The question becomes where and how you would do that. You know, obviously, it would have to be in the district. What happens is that it depends, you know, it really depends up the board. It's possible that it can be done. The answer to that is, yes, it is possible. How, it needs to be determined.
And then also, you mentioned something earlier, which was part of what I brought up to him at the time. They were just saying one of the biggest owners was okay with the SID. But part of the money raised, he was saying with, you spoke of job training and innovative, just creative things to use throughout the city and in the special interest. Is that possible since the city's a mile? Can you use some of the funds that you, and I asked for you? Also, some of the special funds that you use to create throughout the entire city? Or is it just trapped into the few blocks?
That's why when the steering committee comes together and makes the study, they make a recommendation as to the actual boundaries of the district. So if in, if the entire municipality is included in terms of usually it's commercial properties, whether they're 4A, which is retail, commercial, 4B, which is industrial, and 4C, which is commercial residential. If all those properties are included within the municipality, then it is possible, yes.
Because at the time, there it is pretty much talking about the B front and having that, how that was somehow written into the plan. So it is something that we can't speak about, about spreading throughout the entirety of the city, correct?
If the, if the recommendation is to include everybody, all the properties, all the, all the commercial properties within Asbury Park, then yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, 610 Soul. Right now, would you preference to the council how much of a revenue generator it could be with a special improvement district for the opportunity of the board and executive director to find other resources or funding to also be used in the district?
I mean, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know. It could be, it depends on the actual assessments themselves and what the budgets are. An average budget in the state of New Jersey is about $300,000 to $400,000. That's the average budget. The average salary of an executive director staffing is around $100,000. It depends, again, on the timeframe. Some of them can be as low as $60,000. And your assessment could be as low as, you know, $200,000. But then again, you could have an assessment like Hoboken went from an initial assessment, I think it was from $800,000 to $1.3 million.
No, I mean, I mean, the actual, once it's established, are they able to raise funding?
Additional funding? Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they can go, yeah, they can, they can go to the state. They can, they can work hand in hand with the urban enterprise zone, the UEZ program. They can go to, they can raise, they can go and get grants. I know Bob is a great grant writer and gets grants from different sources. I've done it myself. You know, I've helped, you know, banks.
Banks, banks are involved.
Absolutely.
I've been involved in Newark, Newark Prudential was a big funder for.
Corporations are involved.
They were a big entity that created additional funding, which would be able to use for different functions and improvements in the district.
Right. I mean, so not only would you have your assessment, but then you would have generated funds from third-party sources that add to your budget.
Exactly. Exactly. And the other thing is, with this, with this feasibility study, are you asking that it's done for the whole city or a particular area?
The study, the study is to look at the entire city and make a recommendation as to whether it should be, what those boundaries should be. Should it be the entire city? Should it just be certain select areas? As I mentioned earlier, who do you want to exclude from the benefits of the improvement district? That's the question I keep asking the steering committee to answer. And so to your other point is that, what I neglected to mention is that the organization becomes a not-for-profit, files for 501(c)(3) status. (c)(3).
Yes. And, you know, we have, we have additional, if we all continue to hear about parking, if they wanted to improve parking and they saw the benefit, this entity would be able to be on the rack to go out and do whatever needed.
They could put together a feasibility, you know, go out and put it out, you know, pay for the RFP or, you know, that would be done from, for the municipality. They could actually support the parking deck. They could, they could actually, in some of the municipal, some of the improvement districts, they actually pay for parking on holidays, and they, they, they just shut down the meters and they pay the, they, they give that money to the parking authority or to the municipality that they would normally generate on that particular day or weekend. Like, for instance, Fourth of July weekend, Memorial Day weekend, Labor Day weekend, some big holidays. So they can do all that.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Anybody else motion to close?
Move to close. Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Question, one question. The CID adopts rules and regulations.
Yes.
Call them whatever you want.
Yes. They have bylaws. Yes.
And then, does, different chores, anything the CID does would then supersede a city ordinance?
No. Absolutely not. Cannot do, that's, cannot be done. Anything that they do would support whatever the municipality is doing. They cannot do anything that goes against any city ordinance. It's, that's, as any other entity cannot do. The only thing is that what they do do is they work hand in hand with the municipality. So they have the liaison relationship that is built, that is.
They could make suggestions and then.
Yes. And, you know, myself, running several improvement districts over the years, you know, you can, you know, I would attend planning board meetings. I would go to zoning board meetings and make recommendations. I would go to different council meetings, then on redevelopment projects that were in town, and make a comment. If I was the executive director, that person would go there.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
I guess what you should do, since you threw in that cost part, draft a letter, send it to the city manager with like the next steps and all the costs.
Okay.
And we'll go from there and she'll give it to us and we'll go from there.
Great. Absolutely. Shall be done.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You've had that part. I figure you don't have to come back.
Me too. Thank you for your time again, and remember, you know, about Noah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening, and have a wonderful holiday.
You too.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Okay, on to the agenda.
Okay, and now we're on to the minutes. So I have the municipal council meeting minutes, executive and regular of May 8, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Running onto individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-243, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-244, resolution approving special event applications.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-245, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2024 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-246, resolution authorizing purchase of blinds needed at the social services building.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-247, resolution authorizing the purchase of short-term rental permitting software needed for code enforcement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-248, resolution authorizing the acquisition and installation of two new dewatering pumps needed at the Asbury Park train station.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-249, resolution authorizing the purchase of influent pump parts needed at the sewer plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-250, resolution authorizing the testing required at the sewer plant to maintain Department of Environmental Protection compliance.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-251, resolution authorizing the removal and repairs of influent pump number three at the sewer plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-252, resolution authorizing the payment for the mayor's rock and roll recreation event venue fee.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Abstain.
Resolution 2024-253, resolution authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs needed at First Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-254, resolution awarding East scooter share program for the city of Asbury Park to VO.
Yay!
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-255, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for use of Press Plaza for special event purposes.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-256, resolution authorizing professional services contract to T and M Associates for boundary and topographic survey services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-257, resolution authorizing professional services contract to T and M Associates for professional pre-design engineering services at First Avenue Road Improvement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-258, resolution adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development Block Program Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-259, resolution amending Resolution 2023-337, approving 2023-2024 alcohol beverage control license for Asbury Pub LLC, DVA homesick in the city of Asbury Park County in Monmouth, New Jersey in certain limited respects.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-260, resolution extending the duration of the CCRB exploratory committee.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-261, resolution reappointing Michael Del Ray as municipal tax assessor of the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Yay, Michael! Okay. We're now on to ordinances. Ordinance for introduction. I have ordinance 2024-20, bond ordinance providing for the First Avenue Road Improvement Project appropriating $4,792,200. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,190,003 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey. We have a public hearing date of June 12, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Thank you. We're now on to ordinances for second reading, public hearing. Ordinance 2024-11, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for property located at 1201 Memorial Drive.
Move to table.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So this is going to be tabled to the June 12 meeting. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-11 is now tabled to the June 12, 2024 meeting. Ordinance 2024-17, bond ordinance providing for the Main Street Streetscape Improvement Project appropriating $900,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $707,465,000 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey.
James. James.
Director of Transportation, James Banano, would you please provide a brief overview of this ordinance? Thank you, James.
This ordinance provides funds in form of bond to go into the construction phase of the Main Street Streetscape Improvement Project. This project is planting and taking care of 103 trees that we planted along Main Street from the Neptune border to basically 8th Avenue. It's also for a few park benches, maybe four, and bicycle racks up and down the entire length of Main Street from the Neptune border to 8th Avenue.
Thank you, James. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-17?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on bond ordinance 2024-17 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. The comments may be, may be regarding ordinance 2024-17 only.
Hi, Reed Moreno, 8th Avenue. We're borrowing all that money? I didn't, I get the first part. How much of it is paid by the state?
I can't recall off the top of my head how much the grant we received was, was for. I'm sorry, I don't recall the amount for the grant. If you want to call me tomorrow, I'd be happy to look that up for you and give it to you.
What is it?
I don't have the number on me. I would be happy to tell you tomorrow if you want to give me a call. I would have to look it up for you, but I don't recall off the top of my head.
Well, it seems like an awful lot, but just, you know, bicycle racks and, and what else is it for?
It's trees. The majority of the cost is the trees and the associated infrastructure that goes with the trees. We have to cut out the concrete, plant a tree, buy a tree, and provide tree grates to make sure that it don't fall into a, a, a pit, a tree pit itself, to make sure the tree pit doesn't collect garbage. So that is the majority of the cost of the, of the grant.
I could see the trees.
James, is it $192,535 in grant funds?
Okay. Thank you.
And the, so how much is the bond? I could see the trees, but that would make the, the whole street better. But the bicycle racks? Are you kidding? I mean, like, how many do you need? I think you ought to look at it again. That's too much money for what you're gonna do. I could see the trees, and I hope they're not the Bartley pear trees that we had before. I mean, like.
You're right.
But the bicycle racks? Come on. This, that's a main street. I mean, I, you know, I don't even think you should ride your bike down Main Street. It's dangerous. And you have the bicycle lanes, and if you open the door, you'll whack somebody, a passenger. I mean, like, I don't know, but you ought to think about that one.
Right.
The voice of reason.
No, we're, we're bonding that money, but it doesn't mean that all has to be spent. So we can look at it and reduce numbers if necessary.
Do you ever look at the, if we bond something?
Yes, absolutely. Joanne looks at it because it's James' project, will look at it, the city manager will look at it, and we'll look at it. Absolutely.
Not seeing anyone else. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-17 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt bond ordinance 2024-17?
Move to adopt.
May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now, thank, thank you, James.
You want to, you want to jump to 19, so you said you could stay there. Okay, forget it.
We're now on to ordinance 2024-18, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 30-24 entitled Fees of Article III Development Administration and Enforcement of Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Our Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonzo, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is raising the fees that we charge applicants to the planning board and zoning board of adjustment and those, and the escrow deposits. We're also raising the escrow deposit for those who ask for redevelopment plan amendments. Our research, the fees of our neighboring towns, the increases that I'm proposing are not out of line with what our neighbors charge. And also, most importantly, I simplified or I eliminated calculations for fees to flat fees so that it's not confusing to developers and the staff. Again, I also increased, as I said, the initial escrow deposits that developers would need to post when they're, before their application goes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-18?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-18 is now open. Any member of the public wishes to speak, please use the microphone.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-18 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024?
Move to adopt.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-19, ordinance amending ordinance 2024-8, which amended chapter seven, sections 13 and 14 to establish prohibited parking regulations along Emory Street and Second Avenue. Director of Transportation, James Banano, would you please provide a brief overview of this ordinance?
Thank you. This ordinance just changes our previous ordinance 2024-8 to alter the no-park regulation that was implemented on Emory Street to begin at 6:00 AM rather than 7:00 AM. The police department requested this to help clear the street of vehicles in timely manner for the Asbury Fresh Event, which takes place on Emory Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2024?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public wishes to speak on ordinance 2024-19?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-19 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to the 2024 municipal budget introduction. Our CFO, Joanne Boos, and our city manager will now provide a brief overview of the 2024 municipal budget. Take it away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we are presenting the 2024 municipal budget for the city of Asbury Park. Over the past few months, the CFO, Joanne Boos, and I worked diligently and efficiently in preparing the 2024.
And I lead a job.
And I lead a job. Sorry, mayor and council. We met with all department heads and made necessary cuts to their budgets while preserving the services to the residents of Asbury Park. We are mindful of the residents' tax dollars and the allocation of resources to achieve and maintain council and community goals. This budget reflects the day-to-day operations, sets spending boundaries, and also fosters transparency and accountability in managing public funds. The proposed 2024 budget is $57,267.90. Compared to 2023, this reflects a tax decrease to 55 cents per $100 for a decrease of $46 per home. The 2024 tax rate of tax will be $68 per year on an average 2024 assessed home value of $589,290.
Excuse me. She says that she can't hear you.
Talking to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were your, were the beginning numbers right?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right. As you know from previous years, the city is faced with hard costs from contractual obligations as well as anticipated costs such as gas and electric. The increased reoccurring costs are health insurance and pension. Despite this, the economic success story of Asbury Park are some of the various sources of revenue, such as parking and beach. The city has advanced with an upward trend every year. In 2023, parking revenue was $3,872,000, which is projected to be increased in 2024 to $5.5 million. Thank you for your commitment and your consideration in reviewing this year's budget. Mayor Moore and Councilwoman Clayton, thank you for your participation in, with this budget.
Chapman.
Chapman, I said Clayton. I'm sorry. I missed not even a year.
No more trips to Alaska, I thought.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you both. And this was not done overnight. This was many meetings, many sessions, because the original number was much, much higher than that, but we've got it down as low as we can to be responsible to the taxpayers. So I thank both of you for working so hard on it. Thank you. Thank you for supporting.
Thank you both. So, resolution 2024-262, resolution introducing the 2024 municipal budget with a public hearing date of June 26, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Don't want to have anything else? We're on adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Welcome. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Be adjourned.